Let's stand together for a moment. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the multitude of blessings you bestow upon us in each of our unique ways. Grateful to be here with this group. I'm grateful to have my attention and care and concern squarely facing the city of Banderas. And I hope too that we all have the opportunity to do our best with love to move this town along in whatever ways we can. I'd like to say a special prayer for protection for those bracing for the impact of Hurricane Milton. I hope that all of the individuals and the people working hard to protect one another and keep their communities safe may do so with your strength and with your love to guide them. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas woman, one state, under God, and one individual.
Thank you. Yes? Oh, I forgot to call roll. We have council members, mechanics, hours, and former president and our city secretary here. Our tonight are council members bringing in battle. So, item three is our visitors to be heard. Did anybody, any of you sign up for other visitors?
I literally signed up.
Okay, how, how?
Do you want to stand up?
No, no, just not necessarily.
I do want to stand up.
If you would like.
Patricia, you signed up for the public hearing portion. Is that what you want to speak on?
Oh, no, I'm in public speaking.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Well, I may need public hearing too.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Either way. As you all know, the Smithsonian Institute is bringing an exhibit here to Banderas. It is a cooperative effort between our Division of Visitors Bureau and the Frontier Times Museum and the Banderac County Historical Commission. That request was always written with the premise that everybody would work cooperatively on this. That's going absolutely gorgeous. It was also suggested and implied that we would use the old county jail. That ain't gonna happen because for us to, as a team, move forward to secure some other outside dollars, it's real hard to write a grant or give a speech and say, "Well, we know we're gonna do it." Well, where are you gonna do it? We don't know. So, thank goodness, there was a meeting with all of the partners in Mr. Bitski's office yesterday. The Banderas Middle School's cafeteria will be utilized. It's one block off of Main Street, basically. It is, two structures are historic on the middle school, and it does not conflict with the school dates. We have to keep the exhibit open three, if not four days. Obviously, since our office is open six days a week, our intention is to keep it open six days a week at least. That gives us a lot more flexibility. We need a minimum of eight hundred square feet to house the exhibit. That cafeteria will literally be, if that's all we put in, it will be swamped. But there are several patterns that are talked about in the exhibit itself from the Smithsonian. We're all electrification. Let's get some Banderac co-op to get a really nice going from the first electric to what they are currently doing, solar, as well as the fiber optics and all of that. You've got the telephone. So, we need to put a nice exhibit in there about telephones going from the switchboard to... I can also report, or Josie probably could record a lot better. Karita Judd has already, with the team, working with Jenny Hernandez, can capture a lot of her world histories. Pat Boyle has already been done. Cecil LaSturgeon has been done. Their focus is on primarily the stoppage days, but genetics is on the agenda, general on the view. So, we're getting that done, are ready. And I'm here to specifically request, and I will leave the forms up here. We are offered the opportunity by the Texas Archives of the Moving Image, acronym TAMI. They are providing an opportunity that anyone that can spare it out, old Super 8, home videos, whatever, as long as they're shot here in Banderac County, they will digitize them, return your original film. The request is that that remains in their archives. Duh, that's simple. And the only fee attached to that, it's based on the amount of what I would call footage that they have to digitize. And to make it simpler, you can bring them to the Frontier Times Museum or the Division of Visitors Bureau. Both of us are open six days a week. And to make sure that they get delivered directly to the source, TAMI, I personally will drive them up there after the catalog. TAMI will be returning them. Then, during the exhibit, they will do an onsite collection. But it's our hope that we can show some of these films during the exhibit parts. Yeah, you can't ask.
No, and I think we probably hit three minutes. I don't know.
Probably have. But there you go. That's it in a nutshell, but things are moving along with that project.
Thank you.
She doesn't know this, but we'll wait for another time. Yeah, other good news is coming too.
Thank you, Pat.
Your model?
Any other public comment? Okay, moving along to item four, our consent agenda. We have a few things here. Item A is approval of resolution 2024-032. Three, 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 four, three, five, three, six, approving funding from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund for Frontier Times Museum for $2,000. Vender per rodeo Memorial Day, $7,000. Per rodeo Labor Day, $3,500. And riding along the date Summer Series, $9,000. Oh, and BBA for $8,500. And then item B, approval of minutes from the September 24th regular meeting. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agreement.
Thank you. And we have a motion, my line, and a second by Jeff. All in favor, all in favor, none opposed. Consent motion passes. So, item B, I'm sorry, item five is our public hearing. It is 6:09, and we will open our public hearing for item A. The city of Banderas will conduct a public hearing to review the performance and obtain comments on its Texas Community Development Lot Grant, Rural Economic Development Plan Contract Number CRP 220178. Consultants from Grant Works Incorporated will give a presentation of the planning at the hearing. Okay, and I believe we have our Grant Works friends on Zoom. And as you all know, we, this is kind of a round two. We wanted to give council time to include any additional comments. We had specifically honed in on three of the seven or eight projects that were picked up in this strategic plan as possible funding opportunities for, which we, you know, we're not here to discuss phase two, but just knowing that those three had potential for funding, we wanted to make sure that this project scopes were as extensive as council would like for them to be. Is Joe there?
Yes, Joe, go ahead.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead and share your screen.
Oh. I have a comment, Joe, about item number six on the development priorities. I feel like that really should be titled as it was consistently throughout our meetings, Career and Technology Education Center. That language is more aligned with the ISD's goals and other, for example, LMO, Community College District, Workforce Solutions, and other funding opportunities. And I think it's, I do think it's important that the language matches. Is that easy enough fix? Okay, okay. Well, I think that's, you make a really good point for all of us to understand that adopting this tonight does not set this in stone as all plans are adopted and over time need to be revisited and updated. Right. Go ahead, Lynn.
So, this development priorities that you have listed right now, that is based on what was taken by the survey, right? Those priorities are from the survey that was taken?
Well, I want to add too, Joe, that even prior to Grant Works involvement, like from the time, we had to hold public hearings with the community even in 2021. So, list of priorities from multiple open meetings here at City Hall. And then we came and got feedback from the council a couple, at least once before finalizing the plan. So, public meetings, stakeholder, survey, stakeholder meetings, council input and feedback, and our comprehensive master plan, of course, informed about that.
And I'm to understand that that's not set in stone because looking at that list, if we're not going to be able to put this million dollars to the wastewater treatment plant, then I feel like, you know, that should be different priorities, the order.
The order doesn't matter.
Okay, because we're, but that's what we're gonna vote on tonight, right? Is that order?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really at all.
Okay, fine.
And it does so happen that from TDA, we, our feedback that we got was the city park improvements, the mobility support, and the historical jail. Those three of the seven are gonna be basically your choices from this list for funding. And that's gonna be totally up to council at a different time.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. So, what else do we need to cover, Joe? Patricia Moore? Go right ahead.
I would like to look at the slide, the last, the next to the last slide, slide number 12. You did that very, very quickly.
This is just a projection pad.
Oh, I really, I, I, I know that. I was just looking.
It's not to say that those projects are going to start in 2025.
Oh.
Right?
I understand that totally.
Yes, ma'am. So, my question was kind of in line with what he's talking about. In terms of the grants and the potential usage, is there other potential grants that may be utilized? And like, the dates are those hearts set more so in those actual grants or tentative dates put in the grants?
Well, I think what's important to note is that, again, these are all projections and estimates. But having this strategic plan completed and done, especially in the way it was done, so when we do go for funding for any, any of these opportunities, this is a big plus for funders to see that we've had the community input, we've had the strategic plan developed. It gives us those points in the scoring of a grant application to have had this done and be able to say, this is a priority. It's in the strategic plan.
And this one was covered by a grant, this is, okay.
Joe, in the, in the document itself, in the plan itself, under section 4.2 Parks, that being one of the potential funding opportunities, I wanted to mention in the project scope, just a couple of things that aren't specifically identified that I know are in the comprehensive master plan or have been at least brought up. And I know that some of this we wrote a grant for, but restroom facilities, skate park improvements, and disc golf course improvements. Just to have those mentioned in there, not that that would be even a part of the phase two funding choices, but just so that they're in there for whatever opportunity presents itself. I think it's really helpful. And did any of you have any other additions to the scope?
I don't know if I called it restrooms. There was some, there was some language in there where I thought we talked about that last.
Well, and, I mean, see, and the way I kind of feel about it too, as long as there's, is there mention of our, oh, there is. You know, there's mention of our park master plan. So, I would think that anything in the park master plan would kind of fall into this category as well. Am I, am I right in that thinking, Joe? Or do we need to really specifically identify all the things? Do you have something, Jeff?
Yeah, well, quick question, might be silly or not. Well, having the park master plan would be helpful anyways, I assume. Is that correct? Because if we already have a master plan for the park and we're trying to outline this, this, I guess, this input and everything like that, we could just associate that with what we need when it comes to grant funding. Would that be correct? Might, might even make sense.
I don't think we can use that.
It makes sense to me.
I don't think, I don't think we can use that master plan.
We mentioned it in this plan. So, I would think whatever is in our park master plan, we need to.
Say it exhibit.
Right, would that, that make more sense than what I'm trying to get across?
Joe, I think Jeff and I are kind of coming from a similar place anyway. And one thing that just kind of kept coming up for me is we had one person that really identified this pavilion. You know, this pavilion should be the park project, but I don't know that that's how council feels or that's council's priority. So, I don't want to limit a park and the project to this one thing. And I feel like the, the bigger gift in all of that was that, yes, we have this park master plan that outlines several phases and several components of park improvements. And I'm hoping that the council will be free to use that park master plan to determine, okay, what, what Banderas City Park improvement are we going to pursue?
And we can get in that in phase two, or we have to get in.
That's what I want to make sure that it's in here properly so that you can, so that you have that freedom in phase two. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because if I'm not mistaken, we needed everything in this plan to be somewhat outlined so we can actually devise the funds for it. We didn't want to leave anything out. So, if, like, there's the either or. So, do we need to include this master plan or should we not? But it's mentioned, but the specifics of the master plan is not.
So, we've mostly focused on the outdoor amphitheater or pavilion, which, which is great, but also considered words, splash pad, community pool, pickleball, improvements to the skate park, sorry, that is there. I mean, I would love to see restrooms and disc golf course improvements included there, even if it's not for the red grant, if it's for another grant down the road, right? Joe, is that?
I agree with that. I agree with you when you say that.
Is that easy enough to do, just to add those two things? And then? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
So, I just wanted to ask for a little, like, feedback if possible in regards to those plans. When it comes to grants, especially the state enduro grant, as loosely as you can leave it, it's really helpful for you guys because ultimately, like, the specifics don't have to be there. And then it gives you the opportunity to really make it your own.
Broaden it.
Yeah.
But we are trying to prepare the council to best get phase two, which is kind of requiring a little more specific. So, it's yes and, both, both and. And this could, this whole thing can be revisited in six months to.
Yeah, the fact that you can revisit it, for sure.
Absolutely. Are you making notes for your reception?
Well, I'm just, and for some reason, I did not get that final from Stan yesterday that everybody else got, because I'm sitting here all confused about. I did not get that email. I did not get that email. And you remember, I told you I didn't get the final draft done.
I don't think there was a, you know, there was a file sent out right for our last meeting.
Yeah, and from Susan, I, 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 I um, reviewed that, but I have not seen this. So can we tell you?
Uh, it was in the original council pack. I mean, it was in the council packet before too. I'm sorry.
Okay, that, that's fine. I guess what I want to make sure that in the uh, mobility
Oh, yeah, let's move on to that one.
That we do include parking somewhere?
And it is.
Okay, okay.
I did notice that. I'll just review the project scope real quick. The mobility improvement projects would include ADA accessibility improvements, sidewalk construction, parking improvements, equine trails, safety measures throughout the city.
Okay.
So that one felt like it, it's all explicit.
Yeah, covered, good.
Parking sidewalks, ADA.
Yeah, okay, great.
Um, and location is citywide. So it's whatever section. Um, yeah, I, I didn't have any other comments on this, any of the scopes.
I think we had it. I think the last hearing was productive to get all this done.
Okay, well, uh, if there's nothing further, we will close out the public hearing at six thirty-three. Joe, thank you. We're going to go right on to um, item six on a regular agenda item. It's discussion and possible action on the following items. Item A, resolution number two zero two four dash zero three two, accepting the city of Bandera twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-five Rural Economic Development Plan.
Ma'am? That'll be twenty twenty-four zero three-seven.
Zero three-seven.
It changed from the last agenda because I had to add stuff before it, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, I move that we approve resolution number two zero two four dash zero three-seven, accepting the city of Bandera's twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-five Rural Economic Development Plan with the addition of language around restrooms and disc golf improvements within the park improvement section. And changing the language of number six to Career and Technology Education Center.
Great, guys, we have a motion. And we have a second. Any other comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Well done, Joe. Thank you, everybody. We have a plan to work with. All right, friends, um, item seven is closed session and I'm, I'm curious to know if uh, council is comfortable postponing closed session until we have what we need for closed session. Okay, so we'll move on then to item eight, which is um, oh, no, we won't. We don't have any action following closed session. So item nine, request and announcements. Item A is requested by council to place this item on a future agenda. Item B is announcements by council. Yes, ma'am?
Circus is coming to town Saturday.
Uh, Rural Roundup Utopia is October nineteenth. Any updates on the Christmas? No, no pressure, no pressure. Okay.
Well, well.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be more, uh, our next meeting, a lot more.
After the October fifteenth meeting, we'll have a lot more information to give.
We're all excited.
Yeah, where everybody's excited. Everybody's excited.
All right, then. Item ten is adjourned. Thank you, Jeff. And second side Brett, all in favor? None opposed at six thirty-six.
Yeah, it's record time.
Yeah.
Record time! Record time.
All right, thank you.